Welcome today to regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, March 26th in the year 2018. Let's all rise for the lead flag. Flag be lifted, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kurt Santos, roll call.
Maldenado?
Present.
Franciskey? Walker?
Present.
Vasquez?
Present.
Garcia?
Present.
Orange?
Present.
Perez?
Present.
Monroe?
Present.
Medina?
Present.
Kurt Santos, first item on your agenda.
Minutes of the council meeting, regular meeting Monday, March 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Maldenado, second by Councilwoman Monroe. To hear the minutes for a regular meeting, March 12th, the year 2018. Any questions on motion? Roll call to the second.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item.
There are no communications from the mayor's office. And communications from department heads, the council payroll warrant, 032718CC.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Walker, properly second by Councilwoman Maldenado, to hear council payroll warrant, 032618CC. Question, item, motion? Roll call.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried.
A council payroll warrant, 032618LA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Monroe, properly second by Councilwoman Orange. To hear the council payroll warrant, 032618LA. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item.
A council payroll warrant, 032618BD.
So moved.
Second. Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker. Here, council payroll warrant, 032618BD. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item.
Payroll warrant, biweekly, 030918.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear payroll warrant, biweekly, 030918. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item.
Accounts, or shall I say payroll warrant, biweekly, 032318.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second. Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Monroe. To hear payroll warrant, biweekly, 032318. Questions on that motion? Roll call to the second.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Kurt Santos, next item on your agenda.
Committee reports?
Do we have any committee reports? Councilwoman Perez.
Mr. President, last Wednesday, we met with the Public Safety Committee regarding the Fig Bridge, and I just wanted to report that the Fig Bridge was unable to attend. Their reasoning was that short notice that I gave when I called in on a Monday for a Wednesday meeting. I fully understood that. They did send a written statement, which was read into the record, and I will continue to try to get them possibly into an executive session to sit with us and answer some of our concerns. Next item, Mr. President.
Right view, Councilman. Any further committee reports? Kurt Santos, next item on your agenda.
Board reports?
Do we have any board reports? Next item on your agenda.
Ordinance is our first reading, Mr. President. For the record, ordinance 18-005 was passed on all three readings, so this would be ordinance 18-0006. Sponsor Richard Medina, ordinance for flood hazard area for the city of E Chicago, Indiana.
So moved, first and second reading, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear our first and second reading, ordinance 18-0006. Question on motion, Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, what's the difference between that 05 and 06?
Mr. Monroe? I'm Mayor Richard Morris, who is the city attorney. There were three items, twice it simply said city instead of saying city of E Chicago. And there was once where, page, I believe, 16, it referred to five to 15 feet, and we were to put 15 feet. We had sent it correctly somehow, and printing it, it referred it back to the form. And this was pointed out to us by Lita Nance from the Department of Natural Resources. She asked that we correct it. I made the corrections, communicated with the president and with the attorney, and bring it for your consideration.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Kurt Santos, roll call to hear our first and second reading, ordinance number 18-0006.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
That motion carried.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to suspend rules on ordinance 18-0006. Questions on that motion? Kurt Santos, roll call to suspend rules.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, that motion carries.
Councilwoman Garcia.
So moved, third and final reading.
Second. Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Rose, here, third and final reading, ordinance number 18-0006. Questions on that motion? Kurt Santos, roll call to second, final reading, 18-0006.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Kurt Santos, next item.
Ordinance, there are no ordnances on second reading, Mr. President.
Ordinance out there?
There are no ordnances on third reading, Mr. President.
We'll continue resolutions.
Resolution 18-0002, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, a resolution of the E Chicago Common Council concerning certain actions and proceedings with respect to the financing of certain E Chicago senior housing facilities.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker, to hear resolution 18-0002. Questions on that motion, Councilwoman Garcia.
I think Mr. Bennett is here to talk to me. Mr. Bennett? Shouldn't I, thank you, E Chicago, if I can answer any questions. I'd also like to introduce Jim Crawford, who's the finance attorney. So Jim would be here to answer you the real detailed questions of the financing. Just started with the resolutions about? What's it about? It's about the preliminary financing for the project. And it's through an economic development bond. The city has no liability with that. It's, as I understand it, a temporary financing until the full, but once the project is completed, then there'll be a financing package put on top of that, which then would take us out of it. But again, the city has no obligation other than, you've had these before, where it's just an economic development bond, like we've sold with the mill and other places. It's very similar to that. Can I ask one question? Why wasn't this brought up before, because I know we was in this discussion. Why wasn't this brought up before? Yes. Well, this is, this is just a part of that project from the very beginning. But if we had to have the authority to get the project and then go and get the authority for the financing. So this is just the resolution authorizing us to use the economic development bonds to do the project.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Kurt Santos, roll call to accept resolution 18-0002.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
The motion carries. Kurt Santos, next item.
Resolution 18-0003A, sponsor Councilwoman Myrna Maldenado and Councilman Robert Garcia, resolution of the E Chicago Common Council calling for enhanced oversight of the design and construction of the Klein Avenue Bridge.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, properly second by Councilman Monroe, to hear resolution 18-0003A. Questions on that motion, Councilwoman Garcia.
Mr. President, I ask that Kurt Santos will read the ordinance and the resolutions.
Kurt Santos.
Resolution number 18-0003A, resolution of the E Chicago Common Council calling for an ass oversight of design and construction of the Klein Avenue Bridge. A resolution articulating the sense of the city of E Chicago Common Council requesting an immediate and thorough review and enhanced oversight of the design and construction of Klein Avenue Bridge, along with continuous monitoring of the project safety of the Klein Avenue Bridge. Whereas Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, have been contracted to design, construct, own, operate, and maintain the Klein Avenue Bridge. And whereas Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, Fig Bridge Builders LLC, and Fig Bridge Engineers Incorporated have or are known to have known, have common representative and officials, and whereas the Klein Avenue Bridge is to span 6,000 feet and will rise 100 feet above the Indiana Harbor and Ship Canal at an estimated cost of $140 million. And whereas the previous Klein Avenue Bridge was closed, condemned, and removed for safety reasons in 2009. And whereas in 1982, two sections of the unfinished Klein Avenue Bridge fell while workers were pouring concrete, resulting in 17 workers being injured and 12 deaths. And whereas Fig Bridge Builders LLC and/or Fig Bridge Engineers Incorporated designed the walkway bridge that collapsed at Florida International University on March 15, 2018, resulting in deaths of six motorists. And whereas the development agreement between City of E Chicago and Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, the developer requires the developer to bear all risk to construction workers and the motoring public related to design, construction, and operation of the Klein Avenue Bridge, and to follow design standards of the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, the AASHTO, and to certify construction in accordance with federal and state law. And whereas the agreement between the Indiana Department of Transportation and the developer requires the bridge to be part of the National Bridge Inventory, NBI system, and subject to biannual inspection once completed and operational. And whereas Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, a team of the Fig Bridge Companies, Lane Construction Corporation, and American Infrastructure MLP funds entered into a joint venture to own and operate the Klein Avenue Bridge. Now therefore, be it resolved, in order to protect construction workers on the project and the motoring public once the project is completed, the E Chicago Common Council calls upon the Fig Bridge Companies, Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, and the Indiana Department of Transportation to conduct an immediate and thorough review and enhanced oversight of design and construction of the Klein Avenue Bridge, along with continuous monitoring of the project safety of Klein Avenue Bridge. And be it further resolved that the E Chicago Common Council directs the city clerk to transmit copies of this resolution to the Fig Bridge Companies, Klein Avenue Bridge LLC, United Bridge Partners LP, the Indiana Department of Transportation, American Infrastructure MLP funds, Lane Construction Corporation, and National Transportation Safety, or to encourage those persons and entities to see the objects and purposes of the sense of the city of the E Chicago Common Council are achieved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, Councilman Perez, at the meeting, I think we all had an excellent meeting that day. We all had our input. We're all concerned of the safety of that construction of that bridge. I think we all understand why they would not come out in public, restless. They're in litigation all over the United States. But I think we are right into an executive session. And we just want to voice our concern of the safety of this project. We're not, this is not a beat-up session for them, for us, against them. Just us to make sure this does not happen again in E Chicago. Like I said, with many life loss, and we don't need that again. But I think we do try to need to meet them in an executive session to come before us, to assure us what's going on. We also instructed our lawyer to try to find out some other information, because I wanted to know what was the oversight of the state and what's the oversight of the federal government on a project like this going over a walkway. Mr. Bennett?
Councilwoman Orange?
Attorney, excuse me. The one section where it says, whereas the Bridge Builders LLC and all that designed the walkway bridge and collapsed at Florida International University, was only in deaths of six motorists. That doesn't hold us into any type of liability or anything where they can say that maybe it wasn't the developer, it was the construction, or it was the concrete or something of that nature. Does that hold us into any type of liability?
That's a fair question, Councilwoman Orange, and the answer, in my opinion, is no. You're referring to the, what is the, the sixth whereas clause. We worded that as your attorneys very carefully. That clause is a factual statement. We verified the facts that are contained in that clause. And it does not, that clause does not in any way state that you, as the council, are blaming at this time Fig Bridge Builders for the collapse of the Florida Walkway. To the contrary, the statement simply says that the Fig Bridge Builders designed the walkway that collapsed, and that is a fact. They were the designers on the Florida project. And that walkway, after it was constructed, collapsed, and it killed six motorists. So it's a factual statement, and I don't believe that you're in any way wrongfully or improperly violating their rights or blaming them for something. The paragraph doesn't say we are blaming them at this time. It is simply reporting that they were the designers and that that project had collapsed.
Thanks.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Vasquez?
Attorney, so on the second page of the resolution, where it says we have the right to demand, you know, immediately ask them to review and enhance the oversight of this design. Would we have the authority to go ahead to ask them to do that?
Yes, the city council as a legislative body can always make requests that you believe are appropriate. And that's exactly what that paragraph, that top paragraph on the second page states. The council is calling upon the Fig Bridge Companies to conduct an immediate and thorough review of the design and construction of the Klein Avenue Bridge up to this date. You can call upon them to do that.
So those documents are going to be forwarded to you?
This is not a request for the documents. The council members have in front of them, an actual request letter. And if you approve, if you approve this request for information, that's basically what it is, the letter going out, that it'll be executed on your behalf by Councilwoman Medina. And this request letter requests the safety and inspection and other design and construction documents to date. And because this is authored by the letter, by Councilman Medina, they'll come, address the Councilman Medina, and then naturally, he and the city court will share any of the documents that are received. If they're already received, they'll share them with members of the council. Councilwoman Orange?
This has a lot of the same statements as the development agreement. So does this resolution sort of supersede what the development agreement that was already signed? Or is this just to enhance what was already done?
It does not in any way supersede the development agreement. The development agreement, as the council members know, that's a contract. We can't unilaterally change that contract now. We're bound by that contract. But also the Fig Bridge developers are bound by that contract too. Instead of changing the development agreement, this is simply, this resolution is simply your action as the city council. You're a legislative body. You're also, you also can function legally as an investigative body, and also can function as a body seeking information to protect your citizens. And that's what I see the resolution doing, is making a statement that the council is concerned about the safety on a project that's being constructed now, safety of the construction workers, and then later, safety of the motorists that will be using the bridge. So it's not an amendment to the development agreement, but this, you are perfectly within your authority to enact this resolution that Councilwoman Maldenado and Councilman Garcia have sponsored for the council. Councilman Perez?
Mr. Buscemi, do we in any way by line seven says that the developer bears all risk, construction workers, the motoring public for the design, construction, operation, Klein Avenue Bridge, and that they will follow the design standards of the American Association of State Highway and Transportation? Do we in any way by trying to assert oversight now kind of involve ourselves, involve the city from the liability standpoint, shift something over on after we've asserted our oversight? And I'm not trying to suggest that we don't. I'm just trying to get a clear understanding. Now we've actually, I don't know what the oversight exactly means here. I mean, who, who is it? Is the council going to be responsible for ensuring the oversight? And if so, then if there was something to go wrong, then would that have a legal liability then on the council? They had oversight.
Councilman, that's a fair question, a logical question. In my opinion, it does not extend any liability. When you're taking this action to the council, and this is the reason why I have that opinion. The whereas, paragraph seven states what the development agreement states. The development agreement is already in place. It already says that Fig Bridge Builders bear all risk to construction workers and to motorists while the bridge is being built and once the bridge becomes operational. And the development agreement already states that in building the bridge, they're to follow the ASHTO design standards. You are simply reiterating in the resolution that the development agreement already puts that burden on Fig Bridge Builders. And then you're saying, because you have that burden, we're concerned about the safety of our project, so we would like information. Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, like I reiterated earlier, we just want to save this project. If I do work at my house and I get a permit, electricians will come out and they're going to check that work to see if it's done correctly or not. And this is the only thing we want, to make sure the state's doing their job and the federal government's doing their job. I know with that project right there, we can't oversee that project. There's nowhere this city, building department knows what's going on there. But the state and federal government has the responsibility for oversight on this, I believe. You know, like I said, if I do a legitimate work at my house, I get a permit, electricians just come to my house to make sure that I'm doing it to code. And that's what we want, everything done to make the best safety done. So also this letter, do we do this in new business?
Kurt? Yeah, I recommend that you take separate action authorizing that the letter be transmitted. Any further questions? Thank you, sir. I stand behind this resolution 100%. I invite, no way, we want the project to stop. We do need the plans checked, double-checked, triple-checked, to assure that safety is number one when building this. I hope that the state puts a better eye on this and makes sure that we are being safe in building it and that it will last more than the previous bridge did. We need it for the economy of our city, the mills. And with that, Kurt Santos, roll call to adopt resolution 18-0003A.
Maldenado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carried. Any further resolutions?
Mr. President, there are no more resolutions.
We're now moving to old business. The floor is now open to old business. Councilman, Councilwoman Orange?
President Medina, I think a couple of years... Uh, President Medina, uh, I, I think a couple, uh, meetings ago, you did assign someone or somebody that's over the, uh, our House rule.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't know if they had the meeting or not, but I think that we need to get to that, uh, point of building the House rule so we can give clarity. Uh, I think in a situation of this magnitude, uh, that we need to come together in, in some type of executive session and see what our talking points are going to be. I think that the president, because we elected him, should be the one talking for this council. I think we have to be very, very careful with this situation of what we say and what we do from here on out, because you could say something that could cause the council and the city to be in a liability stage. I'm not saying that anybody can add something to this point or what, uh, whatever, but we did elect a president that, and especially, I mean, if you have a comment that you want to give to him on the, on the, something else, but on this type of magnitude of where, uh, the whole United States is, is looking, we have to be careful about what we say and do. And I think that, uh, the comments and whatever we're going to do should come from the president, and, um, that way we can be all of one accord, and, um, so, I mean, the, the House rules, I, I think that's part of the House rules also that the president.
You're absolutely correct. I don't have any committee with, for me, however, I will ask that the House, maybe ASAP, if they'd like to sit down with you, attorney, so we can bring in some of our House rules up to date, perhaps revise some, eliminate some, and everyone's input is going to be accepted on that question, because that's what governs us and it keeps everything equal and fair. Any further whole business? Councilman Garcia?
Mr. President, yeah. I need, I, if you could write a, a letter to control to see if that threshold pay for 3% was paid or not. I understand it was not paid on this, on this last paid period. And if there was not paid on the last paid period, why? We passed that, uh, appropriation ordinance, uh, and it should have been instituted in that last paid period.
Any further whole business?
Mr. President? With respect to the item that Councilman Garcia just addressed?
Yes.
May I add one thing?
Yes.
I re, I recommend also that, uh, there be verification, uh, requested by the council from the city administration to verify that in addition to the pay that you've authorized is paid, that the certification has been sent to the PERF office in Indianapolis to verify the 2018 salary levels for first-class firefighters and first-class police officers. When I checked on your behalf during the month of February, there was no certification of those salary amounts. That is needed as a matter of law so that our public safety officials receive their proper pension amounts, and it's also needed by the state in order to determine the correct amount of contribution that the city, as the employer, should make. So I would recommend, Councilman Garcia, that, uh, verification of the authorization of PERF also be requested.
Councilman Garcia's, please.
Uh, and if you catch that, please add that too. Thank you, Mr. President.
You bring up a very important, Mr. Buscemi, because I don't think that the, uh, if, uh, that figure should have been held back, appropriation or not, that, that usually our retirees should have been set beginning of the year, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct. It was an ordinance approved by the council, and the salary levels were set, and it required certification at that time. The important thing now is, that's water under the bridge. Get the certification in and make sure that it's delivered to PERF effective 1/1 of 18.
Thank you. Any further whole business? Two grounds of new business? New business? Councilman Garcia?
Mr. President, I'm making a motion that we send this letter that's addressed to the FIG and, uh, signed by you.
Second. Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, probably second by Councilwoman Warren. To forward the letter that was drafted to, then the FIG, Klein Avenue Bridge LLC. Questions on the motion? Clerk Johnson's roll call. Maldonado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion, air. Any further new business? Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, Mr. President, I see it in my email, it is, uh, state, state of the city address, which is going to be on April 18th, uh, next month. Uh, second year in a row, uh, residents can go. If they go, they got to pay $30. I think it's unfair that residents or even this council to go to the city's address and got to pay $30 to hear, to hear that. I think it should be free for the residents, uh, to hear our mayor speak at his, um, at his address. And if he speaks, send him a letter and, um, state that, uh, request that, uh, this should be free to the residents until then.
To the mayor.
Any further new business? We're now moving to public expression. Remind those who are speaking for us today to keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Rodriguez?
My name is Lupi Rodriguez, president of Association 36, excuse me, I have a book with 365 in Chicago Firemen's Union, 8821 D Street, Crown Point. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak today. Uh, I actually want to start off by commending you for doing your due diligence and the extra measures, taking the extra measures to ensure the safety of the bridge. I was young, but I don't remember when that happened, and that was a big deal, and I did work shortly with people who were affected by that also. That is appreciated. But I'm here today on a different safety issue, um, and I'm upset because I can't help but wonder if the measures that I took and the path that I took regarding our minimum manning situation were the correct ones. Uh, as you know, back in November, we started discussions with mayor trying to raise our number from 16 to 17, and those progressed into meetings with the fire chief and the deputy chief. Um, they came to a shortstop, if you remember, with the overtime, and then we continued from there, uh, only to find out that despite finding money within our own budget, despite you folks saying there's surplus cash in the city, uh, the chief decided to remain at 16. But what does that mean? That means that we're going to continue to have two-man engine calling in our first district. Um, it doesn't mean that that happens every day, but for an example, it's the last three or four days, you've been at 16. So you have two people on an engine, and that creates a negative trickle-down effect whether you're on a single-engine call or it's working fire in that territory. It greatly compromises our ability to comply with ocean standards that state you have to have two in and two out. That becomes very difficult, and many of our captains that are thrown into this situation are new in that position. Some of them are temporary. We've asked for guidance, even temporarily, on how to attack these fires with that type of manning, and we've received no help, none. So in short, and in English for people who can't understand it, we can't safely and efficiently do our job at that number. Okay? And so I'm here today because we've come full circle after all these meetings. The only thing that the chief has done, in my opinion, is to tack on more training to an already depleted, defeated department. These guys ran record number calls last year and the year before. They're out of pace to do it again this year with record well people, record amount of training power, and they're putting more training on the guys. There, there's no time for them to do anything. You know, for those who think that we're not doing anything, I say, look to yesterday's news. That's what we do, all too often right here in this city. That's what we do. You don't have to go to the area, it happens here. Would have been our near miss, I brought that up. What does that mean to you guys, your near miss? I was it, I saw it last January. We had a guy who went out a window begging for his life, scariest, scariest call I've ever been on, most terrified thing I've ever seen. And another one, fall downstairs, smoke inhalation, his mask came off. That building was about to flash. They came within seconds of losing their lives. Our guys, here, right there, right by Chicago Avenue, that nobody wants to talk about. Very serious. We need more guys. I need your help. If you can handle public safety, we can talk about this. I can explain what all this means. I guarantee you won't find 16, I guarantee you. Other cities have tried running two-man rigs, it doesn't work. They all revert back to doing what's right. I'm asking the chief, the mayor, and you guys, help, you know? I want your help so we can talk some sense with these guys. We need those guys.
Thank you. Clerk Johnson's any more requests?
No, Mr. President.
Chairman Alex, add a motion to a chairman?
Second.
Roll call to a chairman. Maldonado?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia? Garcia?
Yes.
Orange? Perez?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, meeting is adjourned.